Morning. Town of Montgomery, Annual Town Meeting 2019. The legal voters of the Town of Montgomery in the county of Franklin are hereby notified and warned to meet in the Town Hall in said town on Tuesday, the fifth day of March 2019 A.D., 9:00 to 4:00 noon to act on the following business to wit Article 1, to elect the moderator for the ensuing year. Any nominations?
I'm electing Tim Murphy.
Tim Murphy, any other nominations? No nominations and no objection, we'll cease the nominations and all those in favor of having Tim Murphy serve as your moderator for the ensuing year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it and you've elected Tim Murphy to serve as the moderator. Thank you. Article 2, accept the reports of the town officers, their motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we accept the reports of the town officers. Any discussion? Any questions on the reports? Any corrections?
Yep.
Charlie.
Couple corrections or additions. Page 30, restoration of records. The revenue line should be $7,740. The expenses line should be $12,236.02. So again, that was revenue of $7,740, expenses $12,236.02. On the town officers table, page 3, the JPs listed are actually outdated, correction there, Laurie Murphy is actually Deanna and the terms expiring would be February 2021. And lastly, on the, oh yeah, zoning administrator on page 5 should be Ellen Fox. Lastly, on page 33, delinquent tax collectors' report, page 2 of it, total taxes due as of, that should say December 31st. And that was my fault, not a news.
Any other questions or comments on the town reports?
And on page 104, the planning commission meets at the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00, not 7:00.
Any other questions or corrections or comments? If not, the motion on the floor, article on the floor is to accept reports of the town officers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it and we voted to accept the reports of the town officers. Article 3, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town clerk and provide in 17 DSA 2051 E? Their motion.
Several.
Or seconded.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town clerk. Discussion. Sir.
Now, does that actually mean, does that mean they're taking higher outside, outside of town?
Yes. Yeah, under legislation, if it was an appointed position, the select board could appoint somebody from the community or someone who doesn't live in the community. That's correct.
Now, is that actually necessary? We don't have qualified individuals in our own community?
It wouldn't be necessary to hire somebody, it wouldn't mandate that we do so, but it would give the town the option to do so if the candidate presented was a more qualified candidate.
Any other discussion? Any questions?
What would be the criteria for selecting an individual if you point?
What would be the criteria to select an individual if we were to appoint? It would be, I would assume the same criteria we'd look for in an individual if they were elected. It would be the skills necessary to conduct the duties of the office.
Pat.
The select board is pretty busy. They have quite a full plate and now you're taking on more. Can you comment on that? Are you really going to have time to manage another employee, another position?
Yeah, it's a good point and it's something that the boards discussed at a number of occasions, as we've considered this. And I can tell you through one, that yeah, we are pretty busy. You know, I think that the boards weighed that and we think the pros of that outweigh the cons of it essentially. I'll let everyone else comment. Oh, Jacob. Hi. But I'll let them comment as well. I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, I share that same concern and I don't come by this lightly and yeah, I do think that the pros outweigh the cons given just having the support and oversight in the office to make sure that things move smoothly. We're not looking for more work, I can guarantee you that, we don't come by it lightly.
Did the select board want to comment verbally on the pros of doing this?
So I think the pros, again, the main one that we consider is getting the best candidate for the job. I mean, the duties of town clerk over the past 10, 15 years have grown immensely, whether it's by things that have come through statute or just the volume of work that comes through that office. And so I think at the base of it, it's just we want to find the best candidate for the job. Again, I'd let you guys comment as well.
Taska.
By appointing the town clerk, did we lose the ability to vote for their salaries as well?
So there's another, there's another article in here.
See, there's talk about raising the salary, which I personally approve of. I just was curious if that removes our ability to...
Yeah, so then, the compensation for the position would be set by the board similar to the other town officer or town employees, but yes.
Set by the voters. We, I mean...
So if it would be set by the board, the salary, the compensation would be baked into the budget.
Right, but we set, I mean, we vote on almost everybody else's compensation as far as officers, listers, yeah. I mean, what I'm saying is currently we vote on our salary and that would be taken away from us. You would determine that. You would become like the highway guy.
Yes, exactly. It would be treated like the highway. So essentially you'd be voting on it as part of the overall budget, but it would not be a separate article in the board. Yeah.
I would just add that it provides an extra safeguard for the select board to be able to pay based on the qualifications of a new candidate. So if you have a clerk that leaves in the middle of the term and you voted a salary of X number of thousands of dollars, the select board is set paying that person, the new person with no, possibly no qualifications, that same rate until the next town meeting when you could change that.
Thank you.
I don't think it's fair to the local residents to have a, I'm not saying you have to hire an outsider to come in and take the job, but I mean that. I just don't think it's right for us to hire an outsider because we're taking jobs with our locals. You know, if you want to appoint a local, I'm all for that, but if I don't hire, I don't think it's fair to our local residents.
When recognized, I'd ask people to please stand up and state your name for the record and then proceed with your question.
Well, I'd like to know who's going to enforce this. It's pretty dysfunctional now from what I'm seeing. So who's going to hold the town clerk accountable if she shows up, you know, sets new hours? Who's going to set the hours? What's going to be the rules on this thing? And then if they don't show up, who enforces it?
Well, that's actually a great question and that is one of the things in our discussions that came up was the fact that there's a presumption in town that we have control over the hours of the town office and we don't. That's a decision the town clerk makes. Under this new system, the select board not only would be responsible for deciding who to hire or fire, but they also would be responsible for setting hours, setting procedures, setting processes. There would be more accountability in some ways rather than just have the clerk be accountable every three years during the election process. So that's a good question.
Okay, I agree with Laurie. I think the first thing they should come from the town. I agree with him on that. The second thing is we split the deal up. We went town clerk and treasurer. When they were together, that was good stuff. Now how are we going to do this? We split it up. So now we got two people, which didn't make a bit of sense to me, with one person to take care of.
Carol.
Carol, remember, so you would have the option however, of hiring the same person to be clerk and treasurer if both of these articles were to pass? Or are you set that it's, they are positions that should in fact be separate?
No, we'd have, the ability to hire the same person for both positions would still remain. Again, the goal would be to hire the person, hire an individual who has the skills and experience to do the job in the best fashion that we can. So it doesn't have to be two people, it could be the same person. And I will say that, you know, even though this would give the board the ability to hire outside of town, we would look, you know, to somebody who is a member of the community. Because I do think there's a lot of value to having somebody in that office that is part of our family.
Titus Pressler. I speak in favor of this change and in addition to all of the other arguments that have been offered, I would suggest that there's a difference between policymaking and policy implementation. Our elected officials are the people who make the policies. Others are the implementers of the policies. And I don't think anyone really sees the town clerk as someone who establishes policy. The town clerk is someone who carries out the policies of the town as established by the select board. It's important that all of our elected officials be town residents. It is not important that implementers of policy be town residents.
My name is Walter Knight. Just wanted to comment that while obviously to echo the board's statement there, having someone from the town is progressional. Having been in the town clerk's office many times, I will say that having an experienced person that can tell, which has been many times my experience there so far, but having someone experienced in general trumps hiring someone local any day because we need it for the job to get done well and just hiring local for the sake of hiring local won't serve the community.
Arnold Mercer. And again, you guys are stating that you think you've got enough time to handle this. You know, this requires interviews of individuals, right?
Yep.
So you're looking for one person to do both jobs or either or, which is it? Because you've got to offer benefits to both.
Yeah, so again, as we stated previously, it could be the same person, it could be two different people. The question of benefits would come up in terms of the number of hours worked. As described in the letter in the book, the number of hours worked in the office that we'd be setting, the clerk would be eligible for health insurance benefits, but the treasurer, if it was a separate individual, would not, just given the number of hours worked in the week. So if it's the same individual, you'd have the same person getting benefits. If the treasurer was a separate individual, they would not be receiving health care, so we wouldn't be worrying what happened to double up on that. As far as the interview process and things go, the responsibilities are really different, but I'd equate it to the zoning administrator, right? So someone who actually has to have a really good, really good knowledge of our zoning bylaws, experience behind that, the skills necessary to administer the position. Right now, Ellen doesn't live in our community, but I think she's doing a fantastic job. And the same process would apply there. Interviewing candidates, setting up guidelines for their responsibilities and then holding them accountable. So it would be more work on our end. Our hope would be that most of the work would be upfront in setting these parameters and guidelines for the position. So, yep.
Sue.
Yes, Sue Wilson. Having volunteered and worked in the town clerk's office, I think it's a great thing to have the two positions split. Things have changed so much over the last 10 or 15 years. It is too much work for the town clerk to be able to do her or his duties and do the treasurer's. I mean, it really is. I've seen this firsthand. I think splitting the positions is the way to go, the way we're doing it right now.
Well, if that's the case, then do we get rid of the assistant? We've got an assistant in there, so why would we need an assistant?
So, I mean, I'll let everyone speak to this. I think the role of the assistant is crucial because of the volume of work that comes through that office, but also not just the volume of actual desk work, but the volume of foot traffic and phone calls. I mean, one person could be in that office all day just dealing with the folks that come in to make payments on something or need to use the copier or need to do a deed research or phone calls. I mean, without having two bodies in that office, at least part of the time, they wouldn't be able to get the work done that needs to get done. And I'd love the folks that have worked there in the past to comment on that, but...
I think that there is a reason those positions were salaried and it was very easy for the voters in town to not really understand the level of work that went through the office. Because regardless of whether or not I was there for 40 hours or 60 hours a week, the public didn't see that. But that is what it takes to get the work done, especially if both of the positions are combined. So every phone call, every walk-in that comes in pushes off the project or the work that you're doing at your desk and it's not feasible to continue that way.
Greg Lucas. Are you planning to pay by salary or by hourly?
The framework that we're looking at would be paid by hourly and we think that offers some greater accountability to the position, paid for hours' work, so.
Sandy.
Sandy Bowman. How would this work? You've asked to appoint the town clerk, but elect the town treasurer, so I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, so under Article 5, there is an article there to elect the town treasurer and that's because the term is, well, it has to be, the term is expiring. The town treasurer was appointed right now, so if this didn't pass, we would still elect the treasurer. If this article did pass, then there would be a motion to pass over that article and essentially not vote on it.
Suzanne Pelletier. If it's hourly, I'd like to see a cap. Because as Deanna just said, she could work 40 hours or 60 hours, but I work salary and I know like, I can't even go shopping at Hanford without getting a text or a phone call I have to answer.
Yeah.
And if you're going to charge every time you answer your phone or a text or an email off duty, it just, it could, you know, be 70.
Yeah, so we...
So I'd like to see a cap on it.
We do have a cap planned. It is articulated in the letter. 30 hours a week for the clerk and 24 hours a week for the treasurer.
So when she says she works 40 to 60 sometimes, how will the work get done if it's hourly?
So that was, that was combined positions.
Okay.
Taska.
Yeah, your terms expire in 2021. You vote and if your real life is discussed, if we vote for these articles, does that end their terms and you can start this, like she can fire her tomorrow and you can hire somebody else?
So, yeah, so 45 days, 45 days from the adoption of this article, the term would expire under statute.
Okay, so is it, is it your intention to work through the end of your term?
Through the end of my term? It is my intention to work any portion of that 45 days that the select board finds is necessary for their interview process. And if the article doesn't pass, I'm not sure how long I'm going to be able to remain as clerk.
So that, I guess this is the reason, sorry, I just wanted to, I mean, Aaron, is it your intention to continue on if you were, okay. I just, it's kind of, that's kind of the reason why this is on here on some level is feeling so...
So what's one of the hours that...
So the reason that the positions are split, I was offered, it took a job with the state of Vermont, which means that I work from home at a home office and then my duties for town clerk are supervisory and to make sure everything is done that needs to be done evenings and weekends. Because if I'm in the office during open hours, the discussion that ensues does not allow me to do the work that needs to be done in the short period of time that I have. So I've been putting in an average of 10 to 15 hours a week, which is what the clerk's salary was based on anyway. That is not sustainable for me or my family. I am sticking it out so that the voters can do what it is that they want to do. I didn't want to put the town in a position where they were kind of floundering and looking for someone who would be able to fill the position, especially if the article didn't pass, then the person would have to come from in town. I want to give the select board an opportunity to do what is best for the town. That's why I'm still here.
Other questions? Anyone new?
So what is the new, how is that, the treasurer will have to work before we have the offer of benefits?
24 is the maximum that the, any town employee can work up to 24 hours and not be eligible for municipal retirement. For health insurance, it has to be 30 hours unless the select board decided to offer a per-rated benefit to persons who work part-time.
Do you hear that? Eric.
I'm going to vote in favor of the motions. However, my reading of the statute, I don't see how it permits appointment of someone from out of state, from out of town. And I would hope whoever you appoint moves into town as quickly as possible.
So to that point, you know, the guidance we've received from Vermont League of Cities and Towns on that is that this would allow us to appoint somebody out of town. So that's, you know, none of us are lawyers up here, but that's the guidance we've received from the entity that gives them reasonable assistance.
I just hope I don't have to say I vote this out.
Yeah, me too.
We all go that way.
John Little. That argument to me is a little bit problematic being a lifelong teacher in the area. I've heard of that argument, teaching at Toddridge for a couple decades and over in North Country and I've heard it for years. We're regional, we're not just an isolated unit here in Montgomery.
Any other questions or comments? Merrill.
If I think of matters of this nature, we certainly need to look at the advantages and disadvantages and the pros and cons of something and not of emotions. And the one thing, Pat raised a very important point, is the workload. Selectmen now hire an assistant because they couldn't handle the workload, that's one thing. And come to appointment, whether it be qualified or some other criteria, in the past, a select has demonstrated that they don't appoint based on qualifications, other criteria.
Could you articulate that? What you mean by that? Could you expand on what you mean by that?
Your criteria had asked, and I think qualifications was one important criteria.
Yep.
And in the past, when you have failed vacancies, you have chosen someone with no experience over others, where you had a choice of...
Could you point to a specific?
Of, for the vacancy of the selectmen last year.
Okay, was that when you were running?
Pardon?
Was that, was that when we didn't appoint you, Merrill?
Didn't you, when you asked?
Was that, was that when you threw your hat in the ring and we didn't appoint you? I'm wondering which, yeah, okay.
You appointed all the non-qualified, was it okay? That's your choice, but it's just, I raised a point of what you, you know, that you have demonstrated, you don't necessarily put my qualifications as a high priority. So if you look at other items, if you look at advantage and disadvantages, again, you take control away from the voters. And I believe we're not if you appoint someone higher. Is there a difference in compensations for health insurance and workers' compensation or what? Does there be a difference?
If it was an appointed position?
Yes, versus elected.
It's this, the type, what we're looking at is just based on hours, an hourly and hourly rate.
Yeah, so that didn't happen. Well, you pay the highway hourly rate too, but would there be a difference in, or an added cost in health care and workers' compensation or what?
No, I mean, under what we're looking at, we still have one individual in the office getting health insurance. The MERS would stay the same as far as the eligibility for that.
Well, I would just suggest that the disadvantages outweigh the advantages of appointing rather than electing.
Any comments, questions, anyone new? Taska.
One last question. So if we don't vote for this, and Deanna, you know, with all due respect, I resigned as a select person before, if we do not vote for this and three months from now, Deanna decides it's too much and she resigns, what's the process moving forward? You appoint and then we vote to approve the following year?
Yeah, so statute, what statute lays out is that the resignation of the town clerk would allow the select board to appoint and then there would be an election held.
A special election or...
Well, the statute is kind of vague in terms of when that election would have to happen. It would have to happen by the next town meeting.
Before.
No, by.
But it could happen at the next town meeting.
Yeah, so basically, next March.
Same as we're doing with Aaron, it's a similar situation.
The specific language is fourth whip.
Fourth whip. Whatever happens, I think Deanna has done a marvelous job, so.
Carol.
I would just say that, given the importance of the town clerk and the treasurer for our town, that I feel much more confident that the select board, through their interviewing processes, have a much better handle on who's qualified and who's not than I sitting here in the audience and trying to elect somebody off of the floor when we have no knowledge of really credentials, people get to speak. But I think it's very important for our town to have someone who's been, you know, interviewed and selected on a professional basis. It's a professional position. It's not just a walk apart. And I think Deanna would agree with that, that, you know, it's very important for qualifications to exist and we have no knowledge of those when we're voting from the floor.
I've been on the select board almost 15 years and I've seen the big change in the office and how much more work there is and I, you know, I feel, we know, this was a hard decision for us to make because it is going to add to our workload, but I just feel like our first priority is to find somebody in town, you know, to fill the position, but I just have seen this position really...
Do you have a microphone for the show?
Over the, yeah. So that just, I mean, this was a, you know, we've seen the change.
And it's worth noting that all the pros and cons that have been discussed here at the meeting are the exact same arguments and discussions we had back and forth as we were weighing whether to bring this before the town. So I'm happy to report that we've, a lot of what you've talked about are things that we really did consider. It's not something we're rushed into at all.
Anyone new?
Call the question.
Anyone call the question? Any objection, calling the question? Any objection? You spoke three or four times.
I want to make the motion to see discussion.
The objection has been made and with no objection, we'll put this to the vote. No objection having been heard. Article 3, the voters authorized the select board to appoint a town clerk and provided in 17 DSA 2651E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it and the town has voted to authorize the select board to appoint a town clerk. Article 4. Article 4, so the voters authorized the select board to appoint a town treasurer and provided in 17 DSA 2651F.
Several.
If we moved, is there a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded that the town authorized the select board to appoint a town treasurer. Discussion. Anyone?
Titus Pressler. Just a point of procedure, Mr. Moderator. The chair of the select board previously... The chair of the select board previously said that if there was the option of passing over this in order to expedite, if that could all be clarified, thank you.
So actually, so the article that would be passed over would be, would be...
Five C.
Would be five C. And actually, having said that now, I actually think the more proper procedure there, and this is my fault for doing this and not including it in this article, the more proper procedure might be to amend Article five C to just elect a collector of current taxes. The article we're considering right now, in retrospect, we should have lumped those together. They are technically separate positions under statute, so that would be the process there.
Other discussion? If not, we can proceed to the vote. No objection, no objection having been heard. Article four, that the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer and provide it in 17 VSA 2651F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we voted to authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer and provide it in 17 VSA 2651F. Article five, elect remaining town officers as required by law. Five A, a select person for a term of two years by ballot. Nominations, please.
Jacob Rakuzen.
Is there a second?
Second.
We don't need to nominate, I'm sorry, we don't need to nominate, there's second nominations. Is there another nomination? Jacob Akusen has been nominated, anyone else?
You did accept that, right?
This is a ballot vote. And if there are no other nominations.
I move that the park has one ballot in favor of Jacob Rakuzen.
It's been moved that the town clerk has one ballot in favor of Jacob Rakuzen, there's no objection. All those in favor of having the town clerk pass one, cast one ballot for Jacob Rakuzen, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. We directed the town clerk, the ayes have it, we've directed the town clerk to cast one ballot for Jacob Rakuzen. This satisfies our requirement that this be a ballot vote, if there's any wondering about this procedure.
All set.
And the town clerk has cast one ballot for Jacob Rakuzen, and we have selected Jacob, we have elected Jacob Rakuzen to serve as a select person for a term of two years by ballot. Article five B, a select person for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations?
Charlie Hancock.
Charlie Hancock has been nominated, other nominations? All right.
I move the town, or nomination, move to call the nominations.
Now that I've noted without objection, nominations have been closed, and without objection, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Charlie Hancock. All those in favor of having the town clerk cast one ballot for Charlie Hancock, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we will direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Charlie Hancock.
Notice we didn't ask you, Charlie.
We have elected Charlie Hancock to serve as a select person for a term of three years by ballot. Article five C, a town treasurer and collector of current taxes to fill remainder of three year term by ballot. First, we have to get it on the floor.
Sub move.
We moved and seconded.
Second.
Moved and seconded that, that we elect the town treasurer and collector of, and a collector of current taxes to fill the remainder of a three-year term by ballot. Any discussion? Charlie?
I've moved to amend the article to remove town treasurer, so it'll read a collector of current taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved, we moved and seconded that we amend the article to remove, remove the term town treasurer, and so we'll be electing a collector of current taxes. Any discussion on the amendment?
Should that be appointed?
Question is, should that be appointed?
I, I don't, I don't know the statute well enough right now to say that we can do that at this point. I think to be safe, we should just keep it as elected for now.
Either, either way, that hasn't been warned to point, so.
Yeah, so I think, I think our best option is just to modify, amend this.
So first we have to amend it, then elect a collector. Any discussion on the amendment? Taska?
We've never elected or appointed a collector of current taxes. Isn't it the same job as the treasurer right now?
It's not technically, we did last year...
It was added last year when it was realized.
Yeah, last year we changed this, because we realized that under statute, it's actually two different positions.
Okay.
By default, if you do not elect a collector of taxes, the constable becomes the collector of taxes.
Any discussion?
Not our call.
Any discussion on the, any discussion on the amendment? Barry?
It just occurred to me, if no one is, comes forward and is nominated, then the select board gets to appoint.
Any response to that, or?
Derek's already been appointed, correct? As collector of town taxes?
Yes.
We need to go on.
But she was, yeah.
Okay, that's...
Any discussion on the amendment? And the amendment simply takes the words "town treasurer" off of the article. Any discussion on the amendment? If not, proceed to vote on the amendment, that we remove the words "town treasurer" so that Article five C reads that we elect a collector of current taxes to fill the remainder of a three-year term by ballot. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and Article five C has been amended to read that we shall elect a collector of current taxes to fill the remainder of a three-year term by ballot. Nominations, please.
Eric Copaz.
Eric Copaz has been nominated? Other nominations? Anywhere? If there are no further nominations, and if there is no objection, they can cease the nominating procedure, and we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Aaron Copaz. If that is satisfactory, if you agree with that procedure, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we can direct the town clerk to pass, to cast one ballot for Aaron Copaz as collector of current taxes. Said ballot having been cast, we have elected Aaron Copaz as our collector of current taxes to fill the remainder of a three-year term by ballot. Article five D, a lister for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations?
Rob Barnard.
Rob Barnard has been nominated? Other nominations? Anywhere? Again, this is a ballot vote, if there is no objection, we can cease nominations and direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Rob Barnard. All those in favor of that procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, we shall direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Rob Barnard. Ballot having been cast, we have elected Rob Barnard to serve as a lister for a term of three years by ballot. Article five E, a lister for the remainder of a term of three years by ballot. Nominations?
Nominate Joe Jones.
Joe Jones. Anywhere? For a lister for the remainder of a term of three years by ballot? If there are no further nominations, and if there is no objection...
Joe Jones, Joe Jones is Joe Jones. Joe, Joe has been, Joe has been working with the listers for the past few months, learning the role of the position, helping out in the office, and has volunteered to step into the position. I don't believe he's here today, given that he hasn't stood up yet, but...
He is a newly registered voter, so he is eligible to be elected. It's my understanding that he has been a resident in town for at least a year, and he's renting a house on 242. He does live here.
If there are no further nominations, questions?
Yeah.
Any other nominations? If not, we can cease the nominating procedure, there's no objection, and direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Joe Jones. All those in favor of that procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. We can direct the town clerk, cast one ballot for Joe Jones.
Can I move to suspend the rules, recognize Parma Jewett?
Awesome.
Set, is the ballot been cast?
Ballot.
Said ballot having been cast, we voted to elect Joe Jones as a lister for the remainder of three years by ballot. Yes. There's no objection? No objection, we'll suspend the rules.
Thank you. I want to take one moment to recognize Parma. Is Parma here? Well, now I'm worried, she might hit me with this. So the board want to take a moment to recognize Parma. Parma is amazing for a multitude of reasons, but she's served as town lister from 2007 until now. So we want to thank her by giving her this trunel. This trunel was removed and replaced during the restoration of the Hutchins Bridge in Montgomery in 2010, so it probably dates from about 1883. The trunel is a variation of the word tree nail, which is a wooden peg that swells when wet and is used to fasten timbers, especially in shipbuilding. The square-headed trunnels were used to fasten timbers that make up the trusses, which were the weight-bearing portions of the covered bridges which define our community. Towns are made up of people, with some like this trunel playing a special role in bonding it together and making it a better community, greater than some of its parts. Parma, you're one of those trunnels. Reconsider Article five B.
A constable for a term of two years. Nominations, please.
Brent Gudon.
Brent has been nominated, other nominations?
He's a famous one.
It is a town.
Love you.
Any other nominations for constable? If not, we can cease the nominations, no objection having been heard. All those in favor, we have been Brent Gudon, serve as our constable for a term of two years, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, we've elected Brent for another two years. Article five G, an agent to prosecute and defend suits in which the town is interested for a term of one year. Nominations?
Barry Cade.
Barry Cade has been nominated, other nominations? For town agent? If not, we can cease the nominating procedure, without objection, no objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Barry Cade serve as our town agent for a period of one year, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we elected Barry Cade to serve as our agent for a period of one year. Article five H, one or more grand jurors for a term of one year.
Select board.
Select board has been nominated, other? No other nominations, there's no objection, we can cease the nominations, no objection having been heard. Select board has been nominated to serve as one or more grand jurors for a term of one year, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we've elected our select board to serve as our grand jurors for a term of one year. Article I, a cemetery commissioner for the village cemetery association for a term of five years. Nominations?
I nominate George Gabusta.
George Gabusta?
Yes.
George Gabusta has been nominated, other nominations? If there are no other nominations, there's no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure, no objection having been heard. All those in favor of having George Gabusta serve as a cemetery commissioner for the village cemetery association for a term of five years, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we've elected George Gabusta to be a cemetery commissioner for the village cemetery association for a term of five years. Article five J, a cemetery commissioner for the center cemetery association for a term of five years. Nominations?
Andy Courier.
Ann Courier? Other nominations? If there is no other, there are no other nominations, and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure, no objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Ann Courier serve as a cemetery commissioner for the center cemetery association for a term of five years, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we've elected Ann Courier to serve as a cemetery commissioner for the center cemetery association for a term of five years. Five K, a library trustee for a term of three years.
May, may I just interrupt here for just a minute when it comes to the cemetery commissioners?
Sir?
Because I've been reading on their email reports that there's, they wanted to maybe consolidate commissioners of the village and the center, and I do think it's a great idea, because what we do at our village cemetery, the town has taken over having to pay for all the mowings and everything like that, but to maintain the, to the cemetery and working on the cemetery, I've been in that for 45 years now, and I just think the, together with the center commissioners and bills and the commissioners, we have made some progress in making everything the same, how much we sell the lots for in perpetual care and things like that. So I don't know if they could have a special meeting sometime to put us together, I think it was a great idea. My personal opinion.
Select board, I'm sure has heard that.
Yeah, so this, this, last year or the year before, there was a non, it's the last year? There was a non-binding article at town meeting either last year or the year before to advise the select board to look into this, it passed. We've been looking into it. Sue has done amazing work trying to pull together the records of everything, so our hope is that towards this spring, we'll take it back up and dig into it a little bit more deeply now that we have all of our information together. At that point, it'll be a warned meeting, we'll definitely reach out to all the different commissioners to come and chat and talk with us, so.
That would be great.
Yep.
Article five K, a library trustee for a term of three years. Nominations, please.
Marika Delvo.
Marika's been nominated, other nominations? Anywhere? If there are no other nominations, and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure, no objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Marika Delvoa serve as a library trustee for a term of three years, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we've elected Marika Delvoa to serve as a library trustee for a term of three years. Article five L, a library trustee for a term of three years. Nominations, please.
Jane Pressler.
Jane Pressler's been nominated, other nominees?
Yeah.
Anywhere? If there are no other nominees, and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure, no objection having been heard. All those in favor of having, of having Jane Pressler serve as a library trustee for a term of three years, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. The ayes have it, and we've elected Jane Pressler to serve as a library trustee for a term of three years. Five M, a fire commissioner for a term of two years. Nominations, please.
Joe Zartarian.
Joe Zartarian has been nominated? Other nominations?
Yeah.
Anywhere? If not, if there's no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure, no objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Joe Zartarian serve as a fire commissioner for... All those in favor of having Joe Zartarian serve as a fire commissioner for a term of two years, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, the ayes have it. And we've elected Joe Zartarian to serve as the fire commissioner for a term of two years. Article 5N, a planning commission member for a term of three years. Nominations?
Alyssa Hardy.
Alyssa Hardy? Other nominations? If not, and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure.
Who made the nomination?
Um, if there are no other nominations, we can cease the nominating procedure without objection. There's no... No objection. No other nominations, so without objection, we can see with the vote. To elect Alyssa Hardy as a planning commission member for a term of three years, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, the ayes have it. And we've elected Alyssa Hardy to serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years. Article 6, so the town vote to establish a designated reserve account for flood or emergency road repairs, which is currently included in the contingent select board. Is there a motion?
I make my.
It's been moved or seconded?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town establish a designated reserve account for flood or emergency road repairs. Discussion?
What's the reasoning behind separating it out, please?
So, um, the idea was that to create a designated reserve account for those instances, such as like what happened on Rushford Valley Road, um, this past spring. Um, right now, there's no specific place in any of the reserve accounts designated to withdraw funds for something like that. So it usually comes out of the contingent select board road budget, which draws that down for other uses. So the... The idea was that to start putting money away for those kind of storm events, which, given what we're seeing, are probably going to come more frequent. Um, and so we want to have a pot of money available to do that work that doesn't essentially affect the regular budget.
Then it... It takes a little while to get emergency funding, you know, from the state or wherever. So, um, that's why we wanted to start a fund, just so we had some money available for emergency.
Jane Ball, um, how much is that fund? And would be replaced by the state of emergency when that comes through?
So right now, the fund that passed, um, would have nothing in it until Article 7K, um, was passed. And then the idea would be that if it was something that we could get FEMA money for, uh, we would take that and put it back in the account.
Yeah.
Other discussion? Comments? Debate? Amendments? If not, let's proceed to the vote on Article 6, that the town vote to establish a designated reserve account for flood or emergency road repairs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, the ayes have it. And we voted to establish a designated reserve account for flood or emergency road repairs. Article 7, so the town vote the following sums of money to the fare expenses in the ensuing year for 7A, the fire department. Is there a motion?
Thirty-four thousand.
Excuse me?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand? Is there a second? Moved and seconded that the town, um, vote, uh, for thirty-four thousand dollars for the fire department. Discussion? Debate or amendments? If not, we can move to the vote on Article 7A, that the town vote of thirty-four thousand dollars for the use of the fire department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it. And we voted to, uh, to spend thirty-four thousand dollars for the fire department. 7B, machinery replacement fund. Motion?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town vote twenty-seven thousand dollars for machinery replacement fund. Any discussion? Debate? Amendments? If not, let's proceed to the vote. That the town vote, uh, to spend twenty-seven thousand dollars for the machinery replacement fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, the ayes have it. We voted twenty-seven thousand dollars for the machinery replacement fund. 7C, infrastructure replacement fund. A motion?
Make a motion, fifty-two thousand seven hundred.
Fifty-two thousand seven hundred. Is there a second? Moved and seconded that we spent fifty-two... Fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars on the infrastructure replacement fund. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, is there any fund in this account now? I mean, it's just... Just moves up every year.
Well, right now, the bond has a balance of twenty thousand four hundred ninety dollars sixty-six X. That's on page thirty.
We have a few major projects we want to get done with grant. We have to... We have to have money to match some of the grants, so that's why we need some.
Any other questions or discussion? Debate or amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. That the town spend fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars on the infrastructure replacement fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it. We voted, uh, fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars for the infrastructure replacement fund. Article 7D, library operating expenses and payroll. Motion please?
Nineteen thousand thirty-two.
Nineteen thousand thirty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town spend nineteen thousand thirty-two dollars for the library operating expenses and payroll. Any discussion? Marla?
I just have a question of, if you look on forty-one, page forty-nine, there's a forty thousand dollar reserve fund for the library. I believe that is correct.
Anyone care to address that?
I'm sorry, thirty-seven. We sent this thirty-first to 2018. There was a balance of thirty-seven thousand. Is there a need for that additional money this year?
Well, this is... This money will be, uh... It's going to be used for an eventual expansion of the library. It's a capital improvement. It has... Cannot be allocated towards payroll. This nineteen thousand dollars is strictly payroll. And does not cover any of the library expenses.
If that is...
This year...
Amendment?
This year, uh, our taxes are not raised, but taxes is increased by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's an awful chunk. And it seems like we need to, for possible, to cut back on some of these expenditures for this year when there were already surpluses.
Any other comments? Questions? Amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. Article 7G, that the town vote the sum of nineteen thousand thirty-two dollars for library operating expenses and payroll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, the ayes have it. And we voted nineteen thousand thirty-two dollars for the library operating expenses and payroll. Article 7E, building capital improvement and maintenance. Their motion?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town expend thirty thousand dollars on building capital improvement and maintenance. Discussion?
What do we have in the account on this one here, um, as we speak?
Director?
What do we have in the account on this?
So the balance in this account right now on page thirty, under capital improvement, is seventy-seven thousand.
Well, this is necessary because there is a government issue?
Well, we've cut it back quite a bit. Yeah, um, as a number of things we've tried to pull back, um, given needs. There's a number of things that are kind of pending out there. There's still questions and work regarding building across the street. Um, there's some work at this location that probably going to have to do with in the near future, um, regarding fuel tank. Um, and then there's, um, things that we're looking at regarding that building up at the public service building. Um, we've done some modifications to that building to better serve the town clerk's office. The board is hoping to investigate, uh, in the near future, what it would look like and cost to do some additional renovations, essentially to make that a fixed location for the clerk.
You said something about building across the street. What do you mean by that?
I just, there's... There's some lingering questions about what the future of that building's going to be.
And the existing, uh, town clerk?
Yeah, yeah. There's some short-term work we have to do just to keep it functional for the post office. Um, but we're still working towards finding a long-term solution. What is going to become of that building?
So is it possible that if we keep increasing these funds and they're not being stopped, are they going to be put on a new building on across the street? Is that a potential?
Uh, I mean, they could be used for a number of things. At this point, I don't think this board wants to sink a ton of money into that building until we know exactly what's going to come of it. Yeah.
New build.
Oh, a new building. So at this point, just given our track record with building new buildings, um, and how that's gone, what we're looking to investigate are the costs associated with essentially renovating a portion of that building to suit those needs. Um, we think that's going to be a much lower expense. Um, we're hoping in the next few months to put out an RFP, um, to start getting, uh, consultants on board to work with towards that. So that's the plan now.
Well, I see this minus... This drop quite a bit from past year. I would just like to voice my opinion that, uh, I do support in the interest of balancing the budget this year and keeping cost control. I see why we dropped the number. However, realistically, it probably needed to be kept in the long term, maybe next year or years after. Uh, there is a lot of development that needs to go on as far as improving structures. And to see this maintained at this level going forward, I don't think it's enough money. I... I'd just like... I'd like to see it up and maybe even increase beyond what it was last year by maybe another ten thousand dollars. We have a significant infrastructure need, uh, many of you are aware of. Don't want to start that off now, but I'd like to see this to return to a higher number in the future.
Would you like to offer an amendment?
Aye.
Would you like to offer an amendment?
I have to ask you if I can allow to. Um, although I own four properties in Montgomery. I am not a Montgomery citizen.
Oh, excuse me. You're not going to vote in town?
I'm not.
Oh, you shouldn't be talking. I'm sorry.
You can be recognized as a star.
Well, if you recognize, we need a two-thirds vote from this assembly if you are not a member of this assembly. Apologize, those are the rules.
I don't know how to go forth about it.
I would like to recommend.
You would like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules and to recognize him.
The motion made to suspend the rules to recognize him, then...
I second.
Suspend the rules, uh, not... Need a second, not debatable, not amenable, be the two-thirds of majority. All those in favor of suspending the rules to allow this gentleman to speak, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, we suspended the rules, stand up and speak. Although I'm not sure you can't offer an amendment.
And as this topic goes, like, I voiced it out of... Out of, uh, rule, I guess, but that's what I had to say about that, so.
I said?
I cannot report an amendment, so.
Move into town and get registered. Any other comments on the... Basically, the motion on the... Article on the floor is to spend thirty thousand dollars on the building capital improvement and maintenance. Any other discussion? Comments? Debate? Amendments? If not, let's proceed to the vote. That the town spend thirty thousand dollars on building capital improvement and maintenance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, the ayes have it. And we voted thirty thousand dollars for building capital improvement and maintenance. Article 7F, the recreation department. Their motion?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to spend twenty thousand dollars on the recreation department. Any discussion? Sandy?
You know, I would make sure that we're, uh, voting this for 2019 because, see, the year is 2018. And the same...
No, no, no. Basically, we moved and seconded to spend twenty thousand dollars, you know, on the upcoming year. There's a couple of those little...
Yeah, there's a couple of those. A and D is also that way. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the rec department? Marla?
Basically, we say for the rec, uh, on page thirty-nine, it shows a surplus of over fifty thousand dollars. And so, in the question, why do you need a fight? And also, I guess, is it repairs needed for the building and the tennis court? Shows fifteen thousand dollars for building maintenance and over nine thousand for the tenants. Over fifty thousand dollar surplus, but it don't seem justifiable to, uh, raise money again this year, especially with our taxes going up so hard.
Other discussion?
Was there any answer to the fifty thousand surplus?
Anyone to the right side?
So I can speak to that. I believe it was two years ago, there was a benefactor who passed away. He owned property here in Montgomery and some property in Canada. And he, um, he distributed fifty percent of his, um, estate to the library and fifty percent to the rec center. So you'll see those amounts being captured under the capital improvement line for each of their reserve sections, because those monies were received for a specific purpose from that benefactor. The library can't use it for anything but what... Or but an improvement project, whether that's an expansion for the library or twenty benches. I don't know what you do, twenty-three thousand dollars, but it has to be for something besides payroll.
It says in the report, a roof is needed on the pavilion and the tennis court is also needed.
Other questions? Comments? The motion on the floor is that the town spend twenty thousand dollars on the recreation department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? And the town has... The ayes have it. And the town has voted to spend twenty thousand dollars toward the recreation department. Article 7G, the reappraisal fund. Your motion?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town spend eight thousand dollars for the reappraisal fund. Any discussion? Comments?
Anybody comment and remind us why?
Why do we need a reappraisal fund?
The reappraisal fund is mandated in statute. Uh, the state sends us X amount of dollars per parcel to be invested in a reappraisal fund. It's not meant to cover the entire cost of that reappraisal because seventy-five percent of our tax liability were placed with the school tax and twenty-five percent with the town. So the state, knowing that we're not going to pick up... Or they're not going to pick up the entire tab, the town has to invest monies periodically over the... Or throughout that period. Otherwise, you're going to be hit with a very large amount that you have to pay in the reappraisal year. So the select board, to keep the tax rate more level than it could be in any reappraisal year, has decided to put that money away in addition to what the state provides. We reappraised in 2014. The rule of thumb is every ten years or when your common level of appraisal, so the equity every 10 years or when your common level of appraisal, so the equity between what your listed values of properties and your sale price, when those fall beyond 20%, or below, above or above, sorry, above or beyond, you have to reappraise. I think the last time we spent around $150,000, but that was dragged down over a few years. And generally, for a town this size, reappraisal should cost somewhere $100,000. And the balance in that account is seen on page 30. So right now, we have $56,000. And with this $8,000, it would be another $16,000 invested into that fund to build up for our next reappraisal.
Any questions or comments? If not, the article on the floor is that we spent $8,000 for, into the reappraisal fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted $8,000 into the reappraisal fund. Article 7H, Conservation Commission, their motion?
$750.
$750, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town spends $750 for the Conservation Commission. Any discussion?
What is it?
What is it?
What's the Conservation Commission? It's like the best commission we've got, obviously. Conservation Commission does a lot of work around public information outreach programming. For example, coming up March 28?
18.
18, thank you. Charlie Nardozzi is going to be back in town talking about plantings that you can do for pollinators. The Commission does a series of outdoor events, wood walks, things like that. Other kind of projects on the docket are going to be looking at some things around the town forest, doing some trail development and signage around that.
Any other questions or comments on the Conservation Commission? If not, let's move this to the vote. That the town appropriate $750 for the Conservation Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted $750 for the Conservation Commission. Article 7I, Emergency Management, their motion?
$1,200.
$1,200, their second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town spent $1,200 for Emergency Management. Any discussion? Comments? Debate? Amendments? If not, we can move this to the vote. Before the floor, we have that the town spend $1,200 for Emergency Management. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted $1,200 for Emergency Management. Article 7J, Restoration of Records, their motion? Anyway, $4,000, their second? Pass over?
We, yeah, we zeroed that out.
We zeroed that out.
Zero.
Yeah.
Oh, it says zero. Sorry, you withdraw the motion, Wendy? I withdraw.
You draw the motion?
I just have a question on it?
Yeah.
Why nothing?
Well, right now, we've got a motion to pass over.
Okay.
Move prior debate, move into objective consideration. It is, let's see, no second required, no debate, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of passing over Article 7J, Restoration of Records, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, there's a two-thirds vote, and we've moved to pass over Article 7J. Article 7K, Flood or Emergency Road Repairs?
$5,000.
$5,000? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town spent $5,000 on flood or emergency road repairs. Any discussion? Comments?
So the Infrastructure Replacement Fund looks more at longer-term projects that we know we want to be putting money away for, such as like the work on Brady Road that still has to get done. This fund would essentially put some money aside for things that we have no control over and don't plan for.
So if we do get an emergency, we aren't pulling out of the other fund, so we have another project we can't do because.
Yeah.
Just goes back to Article 6.
Yeah.
Questions or comments? Now that we can proceed to the vote. That the town spend $5,000 on flood or emergency road repairs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted $5,000 for flood or emergency road repairs. Just one thing before I get too far is that tomorrow night, right here in the Grange, there'll be a presentation from Abe Leslie, who completed a PhD dissertation on New England Town Meetings. Lot of this research was done right here in town, and apparently he'll be presenting his findings here tomorrow night at 6:30 in this room. The questions and answers, and could be interesting.
Move to suspend the rules to allow Abe to speak if he wants to.
Moved, there'll be suspended rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Rules have been suspended. There he is.
Hi, I'm Abe. I moved to town in 2008 and lived here full-time for a few years and have been on and off since then, coming back for Town Meeting Day. I've been doing a PhD dissertation at the University of Chicago. I grew up in Hartford. My research was about Town Meeting in New England, using Montgomery as my major case study. So I finally finished that.
How are you?
I'm fine. I think I spent spring, and so I have some findings that I could share with all of you about things here in town, as well as the entirety of New England. And so I'm gonna give you a taste of that tomorrow night. It'll be here, 6:30. The library and the Friends of the Library and the Historical Society have been very generous in sponsoring that. I've got a few points to make, but mostly I just wanted to be a chance for a kind of casual question and answer about what have I been doing all these years? That's my stick.
Article 8, shall the town vote the following sums of money for the town officers as requested? Article 8A, each select board member, their motion?
$1,000.
$1,000? Is there a second? Moved and seconded that each select board member get $1,000 and thanks.
The thanks is included here, I think, a little bit tongue-in-cheek. In fact, I believe we have an outstanding select board. And if this motion passes.
I was going to say, if the motion passes, we applaud and especially enthusiastic.
Other discussion? Anywhere? If not, let's proceed to the vote. That the town vote $1,000 and muchos gracias to each select board member. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted $1,000 for each select board member. Article 8B, the listers, motion?
As read.
I need something read it to me a little bit.
First-year members, $50 per hour. Second-year members, $80 per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay our listers, first-year members, $15 an hour, second-year members, $18 an hour. I presume that by second-year members, you mean second year and more.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that explicit, did that explicit? Any discussion? Any comments? Questions? Debate? Amendments? If not, let's proceed to the vote. That the town vote for the listers for first-year members, $15 an hour, for second-year members, $18 an hour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted to pay our listers, first-year members, $15 an hour, second-year members, $18 an hour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. First-year members, $15 an hour, second-year members, $18 an hour. Board of Civil Authority, 7, sorry, 8C, their motion?
So $10 an hour?
Nope, your mom paid the minimum wage.
I was willing to do it for $10,000 now.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay the Board of Civil Authority the Vermont Minimum Wage. Discussion? Merle?
The way this reads, it's the Board of Civil Authority. How many members on the Board of Civil Authority? That's a selectmen of the justices? How many total members?
Select four justices of the case. There are seven JPs. The town clerk is also included. So.
Thirteen?
About thirteen or fourteen, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
If we're $10 an hour, it'll be $130 an hour for the Board of Civil Authority then, right? Paying each member? The way it reads, $10 an hour for minimum for the Board of Civil Authority. So you're gonna split that among all the members, or what?
Actually, to be honest with you, I've never submitted for other civil authorities.
I mean, the Board of Civil Authority generally is like a community service.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. So you should read, we're gonna pay the entire board minimum wage of one individual? Is that what you're saying?
No.
I mean, yeah, I mean, but as was pointed out, the PCA has never, as far as I know, submitted, so.
As that's written, you would get the minimum wage per hour for the Board of Civil Authority.
Yep. As written, if a member wanted to submit for reimbursement, that's what they would get.
I think is another point. I think he's saying is that it may be, perhaps it should read each member should get minimum wage. Is that correct?
Minimum wage is by definition for each person.
There's no, there's no confusion.
If there's no reason to put each person.
Okay.
What is the minimum wage?
Any other comments? Rita?
What is the minimum wage minimum wage?
1075.
1075. 101?
1078.
Sorry, 1078.
And what would that do to our budget if the minimum wage goes up to 15?
Increase. I mean. So it's not really gonna do anything. We had a period of time where we had probably three or four JPs or election officials that would submit timesheets for the time that they worked the polls. But generally speaking, we may have one on any given year. In two years, we had no PCA members submit for reimbursement for their time. The same with the Board of Abatement, so we don't have to have that discussion.
This is a question. Can we even pay them less than minimum wage anyway?
Hopefully we can.
It's just always been done this way.
Yeah.
Merle?
Overlast, if you really want to compensate for the Board of Civil Authority, I mean, it's like the development review board.
Yeah.
We get nothing, we don't ask for it, like it's a community service.
Yeah, I mean, I see it the exact same way, Merle. I guess, like Deanna said, we've always had a line here for it, and our line is still there for it. In future years, the board could decide that we just want to scratch that and not. So we could take that into consideration for next year.
If it is scratched, then the board would set the rate of compensation for the PCA if someone were to submit a timesheet.
So then to my question, under statute, are we forced to compensate somebody on the PCA?
No.
So could we make it a volunteer?
You could make a volunteer position, but if you don't vote at a town meeting, the select board still has the authority to set a rate of pay for that PCA or BOA.
So it's something that got out of hand, if we had a client that was keeping us extremely dizzy.
Would you want us?
I would maybe want to submit a reimbursement if I had to go to Superior Court. Talk about it, eh?
Other discussion? Debate? Motion on the floor is to pay the Board of, each member of the Board of Civil Authority, Vermont Minimum Wage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted to pay the Board of Civil Authority the Vermont Minimum Wage. 8D, the Board of Abatement, their motion?
Vermont Minimum Wage.
Vermont Minimum Wage, their second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we pay the Board of Abatement the Vermont Minimum Wage. Discussion? With no discussion, no questions, we can move right to the vote. No hands having been seen. That the motion in front of the floor is that we pay the Board of Abatement the Vermont Minimum Wage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we voted to pay our Board of Abatement the Vermont Minimum Wage. Article 8E, all duly elected or appointed town officers, the IRS allowance for mileage for travel as part of official duties, and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly-appointed board. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Their second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that, well, the town pay all duly-elected or appointed town officers, the IRS allowance for mileage for travel as part of official duties, and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly-appointed board. Any discussion? Any questions? Anywhere?
All.
If not, we can proceed to the vote. And the vote we're voting on is that the town pay all duly-elected or appointed town officers, the IRS allowance for mileage for travel as part of the official duties, and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly-appointed board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we've approved Article 8E as read.
Mr. Moderator, what's your? I'd like to move, I'm not sure of the process, but I'd like to move that we vote on all items under Article 9 as one.
Let me first get it on the floor.
Okay.
And then we can move to suspend the rules. Article 9, shall the town of Montgomery appropriate the following sums of money as requested by the specific agencies? And I believe that would be a suspension of the rules. And if you're proposing that we suspend the rules in order to take them all as one.
Whatever it is.
We need a second for that.
Second.
Need a second. Suspend the rules, if not debatable, no amendment, but we need a two-thirds majority. Basically, it's been moved that we, moved and seconded we suspend the rules to take all of the items under Article 9 as one. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we can take all of Article 9 as one. And Article 9 reads that we appropriate the following sums of money. Age well, formerly Champlain Valley Agency on Aging, requested $2,000. B, Franklin Home Health, requested $2,522. And C, Franklin County Industrial Development, requested $500. Article 9D, Hazens Knatch Association, requested $1,000. Article 8E, the Sisboord River Basin Association, requested $500. Article 8F, Greenup Day Vermont, requested $100. Article 9G, Green Mountain Transit, requested $568. And Article 9H, Montgomery Center for the Arts, requested $1,000. Any discussion?
Very. We want to end up the day, I think it was 1957, when all schoolwork stopped when we realized that Don Larson was pitching a perfect game in the World Series. So far, there has not been one dissenting vote at this town meeting, the first in the 40 or so that I've ever attended. I hope we keep it going.
We get about a no hitter by the side. On behalf of Franklin County Home Health, I just want to really, really thank everyone in my town for voting for this, because it is the option for people to stay at home and get a library.
Hasn't been voted on yet. On the floor is Article 9, with all those organizations and all those numbers as included.
Mine starts out saying it's specific agencies, and here it says Montgomery Center for the Arts. What is that $1,000 for?
Someone like to address it? Someone there from the Montgomery Center for the Arts?
As read in the letter requesting the amount, it mostly is to supplement building, like supporting the building structure, just like paying bills.
The page is the letter on.
Programming, these sort of things. It's all volunteer work that's been there, but we just have to.
Page 77.
Other questions or comments? Debate or amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote on Article 9. No objection, no objection having been heard. Article 9, the town of Article nine, the town of Montgomery appropriate the following sums of money as requested by the specified agency. Uh, nine A, A twelve formerly Champlain Valley Agency on Aging, two thousand dollars. B Franklin Home Health, two thousand five hundred twenty-two. Uh, nine C Franklin County Industrial Development, five hundred dollars. Nine D Hazens Knatch Association, one thousand dollars. Nine E the Sisboard River Basin Association, five hundred dollars. Nine F Greenup Day Vermont, one hundred dollars. Nine G Green Mountain Transit, five sixty-eight. And nine H Montgomery Center for the Arts, one thousand dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Uh, the ayes have it, and we've approved Article nine as read. Article ten, shall the town vote to appropriate six hundred one thousand dollars, six hundred one seven hundred three dollars for contingent select board? Your motion?
Uh, moved to appropriate six oh one seven oh three.
Uh, they're second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town appropriated six hundred one uh, thousand seven hundred three dollars for the contingent select board. Discussion?
Where is the listing of what's included in that number?
So the contingent select board is if you look at the budget, page twenty-one through twenty-four, um, anything that does not have an asterisk next to it is considered within the contingent select board budget. So for example, infrastructure replacement, line seventy-eight, line eighty, eighty-one, those have asterisks. So those are voted on individually. Everything else is considered contingent select board. Yep.
Any comment on why the bulk of the increase from four thirty-eight to six oh one is top two or three items of four thousand dollars?
Yeah, so.
It's hard to pick out the details.
Yeah, yeah, so uh, we tried to, tried to highlight that in the letter, it was in the town report. Um, the greatest drivers of the budget increase, um, cost of audit services went up considerably. Um, this past year, we changed audit firms. Um, so the cost, in doing so, the cost of which increased quite a bit. One note on that, we don't have the two thousand seventeen audit yet. It's in the process of being done in switching firms. Um, there was a delay because we had to contract them and get them in here, which is why there's no report in the town report. There's just a letter, just a clarification for Larry. Employee health insurance costs are up, so our workman's compensation insurance costs um, largely driven by an increase in wages, highway wages. Um, I do wanna note that the actual rate declined slightly, um, which is testament to our crew's safety record, so keep it up, guys. We're also looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars in required match costs associated with two different grants um, that we're looking to receive this year, um, so that we need to put away. Um, you know, our debt service is almost level, but this does reflect the twenty-two thousand dollar allocation of the machinery replacement fund um, for a new tanker, which will describe later. And then there's increases in town office personnel um, associated with shifting um, the salaries to an hourly rate um, as is described further on in the letter, bottom of page fifteen to page sixteen. Yep, you're welcome.
I would like to know if the budget includes repaving the parking lot in front of the fire department.
The budget does not explicitly include that. That is something that the board has discussed a lot. Um, one thing we are kind of waiting for is for Northwest Solid Waste District to give us an answer as to what their plans are. So what we don't wanna do is pave that and then have them continue to make a mess of it when they move their stuff in and out. Um, but that definitely is on our radar that that.
Are you getting them to kick in money to pay for the parking lot?
We haven't discussed that, but it's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
I, I think that you should, considering all the wear and tear they put on that parking lot, and the parking lot is in really crappy shape.
Yeah.
And I'd hate to see another season go by without it getting repaired.
Yep, yes.
So what's the plan?
So again.
I believe in direct.
Yeah, yeah, no, of course. Yeah, so as I said, the plan, our plan right now is to wait for clarification on Northwest Solid Waste District's plans. Um, there's been discussion for a year or so now about what their future is, is it here or somewhere else? And once we have a solid answer on that, then we'll know about timing for the paving.
When are you gonna have an answer from that?
That's up to Northwest Solid Waste District. I hope to have it within the next six months.
I think that is very disappointing. It seems like you guys aren't doing a darn thing about it, except waiting for an answer. Seems to me you could be doing more than that.
Okay, your points well taken, and we'll, we'll press them harder on that. Yep.
Other discussion?
I haven't been able to hear what she's been saying, but I can repeat it.
She was asking about paving the public service building lot. Um, and the discussion was around uh, waiting for Northwest Solid Waste District's plans as to what they're gonna do as far as remain there or move somewhere else. And the board's position has been that we don't wanna pave it until we know their plans because most of the wear and tear comes from the moving in and out of those.
Right, I've been hearing what you've been saying.
Oh, sorry.
What's, what's wrong?
The lots, the lots full of potholes and it's bad. Yep, and the point is well taken, though, and I, you're, I, I agree, we should press them harder, and we will. So, thank you for putting that.
Alyssa? No, 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 Alyssa. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Alyssa has the floor. Please, please recognize.
I don't know if this is the point to bring it up, but looking at the itemized budget on page twenty-four, line one twenty-eight, it says VCRD with an asterisk that looks like that should have been added on to the end of Article nine, and it's not there for five hundred dollars. Is that something we should add into Article ten now?
That is a great point, Alyssa. Um, that did not make it onto Article nine. So the process for that, I guess. Okay, I guess if that's not voted on separately, that does get rolled into the contingent select board.
Okay.
So that would be, it is included in the budget number, it just didn't make it onto the morning for that.
I just realized that was that.
Thank you, though.
Increase the contingent selection.
Yeah.
So.
See, I just wanted to make a point about the parking lot. I mean, the logical point is you're gonna have to do it in any case, no matter what the plans of, of the waste management company will be. So, um, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't weigh too long.
Yep, no, I agree. It's gonna have to happen anyway, but again, what we don't wanna do is pave it May first and have them leave August second and then have two months of wear and tear that we could have avoided. So, but your point again, going back to your point, we gotta push them on it, so. I can't do math real quick. I guess you probably should bump that.
Please stand. Please stand.
Maybe it's in the block, is uh, are they getting charged in any way for being there?
I mean, no, no. But, no, Barry is a representative.
I represent the town of the Solid Waste District. I think everybody in Montgomery is very glad that it's there. It's not a, it's a, it's a municipal entity consisting of, I think, seventeen towns and five hundred grand by accounting. Uh, it's not a, it's not a separate, you know, uh, waste management company that's for profit. It's, it's the various communities, and we're, we're lucky, I feel we're lucky to have it here so we don't have to travel to Eunice for a roof or a wall or something like that. We're lucky to have it, we don't have to pay for the parking lot.
Casco?
I was, I've kinda amended my original motion on that contingent select board number based on the VCRD not being included.
So to that, um, that contingent select board number does include the five hundred to VCRD. Looking at the calculations, um.
So the six hundred one seven hundred three are you?
Yeah, so that, that contingent select board does include the VCRD line one twenty-eight. Yes, so that, that would be taken to that number, so we don't need to increase it by five hundred dollars.
Okay, so you just leave it.
You just leave it, yep.
The motion on the floor is Article ten, that the town vote to appropriate six hundred one thousand seven hundred three dollars for the contingent select board. Any other questions or comments? Amendments or debate? If not, we can proceed with the vote. Uh, no objection having been heard. Uh, it's a town vote to appropriate six hundred one thousand seven hundred three dollars for the contingent select board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Uh, the ayes have it, and we voted to appropriate six hundred one thousand seven hundred three dollars for the contingent select board. Article eleven, so the town vote to purchase a new fire tanker and authorize the select board to borrow up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a term of five years with the balance to be paid out of the Montgomery, uh, I'm sorry, out of, with the balance to be paid out of the machinery replacement fund. Their motion?
As written?
Second?
I second that.
Moved and seconded that the town vote to purchase a new fire tanker and authorize the select board to borrow up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a term of five years with the balance to be paid out of the machinery replacement fund. Discussion?
There was a similar item on, on the previous town meeting, and uh, my thought simply is this that if you can foresee that you're gonna be needing to replace that vehicle five years earlier or whatever the time it takes to come up with the money, then you don't have to borrow a relatively large sum, and in addition to the capital, you're gonna have to pay the interest. So, would it be sense on some of those items or vehicles, whatever it may be, to, to plan ahead and to establish a fund to prepare for that replacement?
To respond to that, so um, we, we have been, um, so the machinery replacement fund is where this money would come from, and in past years, we have elected to put twenty-two thousand dollars into the fund for this purpose. The twenty-two thousand reflected what we were paying on a fire bond for the truck? From the international trucks? Um, so we have, uh, we, we have been intentionally putting money aside for this, so. Um, so there will be forty-four thousand in the um, account to help defray the costs associated with it.
If we do buy this tanker, where are we gonna park it?
Place the government fire department, we'll depark in the fire station where the current tanker is. We're replacing the tanker that is failing.
Oh, okay.
Not buying additional things.
Thank you.
Other questions?
What other machinery do we think we might be wanting to purchase or need to purchase in the next five years?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so there are some things that are kind of on our, on our radar. Um, the, the largest one would be, I wanna make sure I have it down right in my notes. Um, the, the biggest piece of equipment that we would be looking to purchase at, at some point would be a used tractor used for mowing. Um, right now, the equipment we use for the road department to do the mowing um, is not really adequate. Um, we considered putting that amount into this year's budget, but backed it out due to the other increase that we're seeing.
What we wanna get is a trimmer that then we can trim the brush on the side of the roads, too, and then go over the guardrails with an arm on it. And we're looking at you who's not new, but we decided to put that off. We may just rent a piece of equipment because, keep the budget down.
So that, that was the other piece of equipment kind of on our, on our radar looking forward.
Our trucks are fairly new now, and our loader and the rest of the equipment. So, we thought this was a good time for the fire department, if they wanted to get the tanker.
Barry?
Um, I'd just like to point out that the town can borrow money at a much better rate than we can as individuals. So while it is nice to be able to plan ahead fiscally and put money aside, as taxpayers, in, in the long run, it's not really costing us anything more by having to borrow money.
Yeah, would you guys consider instead of spending ten grand a year on renting an excavator, purchasing one so that my road can get its ditches done every year? Because that, I think, is more important than a new mower.
That's on our wish list.
Okay. Why don't you include that on your wish list?
That is another, another one out there, yeah.
We spend ten grand a year renting equipment, including basic maintenance, and it's, that adds up. That's in my, that would think for a nice excavator years ago, so.
Suzanne Pelletier, does the old pumper have any value that we can sell it and put?
The tanker, not the pumper, and yes, there is some value there. We've already had a few offers from some of the local construction companies, and also from some of the Maple guys in town because of the stainless tank on it. Uh, it's not only just some people who are aware of this, it's not just the forty-four that's in the machinery replacement fund, but the fire department itself has been giving money over the last five years to put towards this, and we have a surplus of almost thirty thousand to kick in on our own.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that.
So the motion?
Yeah, I'm not totally against the new tanker, but um, this tanker is like a use, how often? I mean, that sounds like a lot of money to put toward the equipment. It just sets around.
It will be used once to be worth it, to save someone's life. If your house is on fire, you'll want it.
Any other questions or comments? On the, on the tanker? If not, we can proceed to Article, um, vote on Article eleven, that the town vote to purchase a new fire tanker and authorize the select board to borrow up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a term of five years with the balance to be paid out of machinery replacement fund. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Didn't we amend it to allow, to be paid out of the machinery replacement fund and whatever's available?
I saw some, nobody got my attention at the floor, go ahead. I haven't called it quite yet. About two words left.
Amend to include and whatever the fire, fire department can put towards it.
So to borrow two forty, well, fire department plus machinery replacement, is that, is that necessary?
Yeah, it's already been approved money for the fire department.
Has it have been approved to spend?
The balance to be paid out of, so I think we should include the fire department.
Does anyone have an opinion on that?
I think there might be some confusion. The twenty-two thousand that was placed in the machinery replacement fund last year went into the general fund machinery replacement reserve. So, it used to be that the fire department would pay for their own bond payments or loan payments. It was moved probably five years ago into the general fund, and the town has been paying twenty-two thousand dollars for the past five years for that payment on the tanker. Last year was the first year that we did not have a set scheduled payment of twenty-two thousand dollars to select for, and at town meeting, it was voted to move that money, twenty-two thousand dollars, even though there was no bill at that time, into the machinery replacement fund. This is just continuing that practice when we voted a few minutes ago to move X number of dollars, included twenty-two thousand, which would have been appropriated for the fire department. So the fire department itself doesn't have a reserve fund for machinery replacement. It's part of the general fund.
Okay.
Will drop?
We're gross.
Any, any other comments? We can proceed to the vote. Let's proceed to the vote. Article eleven, that the town vote to purchase a new fire tanker and authorize the select board to borrow up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a term of five years with the balance to be paid out of the machinery replacement fund. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? No? The ayes have it, and we voted to approve to purchase a new fire tanker and authorize the select board to borrow up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a term of five years with the balance to be paid out of machinery replacement fund. Um, I've noticed that our newly elected town representative, Felicia LaFleur, is here. If there's no objection, we can allow her to speak to us a little bit. I was open here for that. Uh, no objection having been heard. Ms. LaFleur?
Oh, yeah?
Thank you. I probably need it because I seem to have brought the steakhouse bug back with me for town meeting day.
Thank you, Jean.
It's trying to be. Uh, just a quick update, and I'll try to put a more comprehensive one together in a written form since my voice isn't the best today. form since my voice isn't the best today. On Act 46, last night, the injunction was denied by Judge Mello. So the H39 that was passed by the House to allow delays is currently sitting in the Senate. They were waiting for any decision by the judge to take it off the wall and move it forward. There is some hesitation by the Senate to take it up, but this decision should give them enough momentum to start moving that forward so that there's at least some planning delays and allowing for school districts to prepare if not fight. We've passed out the budget adjustment.
You guys being latterly?
I'm working on it. We just passed out the budget adjustment. Vermont has a balanced budget even though it's not required by our constitution. So every year we true up our estimates what is actually spent and we make sure that the allocations are correct and we move money around as needed. This year on our almost $6 billion budget that's passed in 2018 was adjusted by $9 million, which is a very small percentage. There was also a revenue surplus which was moved to pay off different debts that were taken out for our pension funds, specifically our teachers' retirement. So moving forward to try and make those funds solvent is a priority. We're getting the budget together. The committee that I'm on, Corrections and Institutions, has been working on the capital budget, which is bonded monies in the state of Vermont to improve our state buildings and assets. Right now we've gone through the first flush of that and we've been able to fund some projects that we just think we'd be able to. And we're looking more closely after we get back from town meeting break to really see if there's anywhere else that we can make money go a little bit further. One thing on the table is long trail conservation, making sure that we're purchasing easements to protect the long trail and the recreation comes from that. There's been a few other bills of high note to this community, one is the farm to table bill grant, not to school, sorry. And the farm to school grant was authorized ten years ago and sunset it's scheduled for this year. And the House voted to continue that grant and that's over in the Senate and I haven't seen that pass yet. I'll let you guys know when that happens. But more in writing, I'm just trying to feel like I know whether I call it good. Is there any questions or specific issues that you guys would like to ask about?
The Act 46 extension that I'm familiar with would have not have included Montgomery's is what is passed, the House is in the Senate. Would that affect Montgomery?
Yes. So in H39, which was a bill regarding the delay, there was quite a lot of four debate and two competing amendments on that. The first was the Sherman Amendment, which would have allowed a delay for all schools. That was unfortunately disputed by March 3 votes. What did pass was the committee amendment, which allowed some schools of delay and some schools would not get a delay. Montgomery does get a delay under H39. Ennisburg and Richard do not. So we're waiting on the Senate to take that up. Yes.
I attended the meeting that was held in order to discuss whether or not payments natural should be opened up to ATV vehicles. In that meeting, the ATV owners were overwhelmingly represented, unfortunately not the affected people. But I was shocked to hear that Vermont does not require registration for insurance for ATV owners.
So that would be...
That's just a statement that was made in the meeting. It's not, they were only required to have insurance if they get a loan for the vehicle. If they don't get a loan for the vehicle, they do not have to register or pay insurance. And I think it's criminally dangerous the way some of these vehicles are being driven on the roads at that speed to have a vehicle on the road without any insurance. And I think that's where the state has to step in.
I'll have to look into that. It was my understanding that any vehicle being operated on roads, not private property, is required to carry insurance. I'll have to look into that, but it's not something that I have the kind of expertise in.
Well, I may have to fall by that. They obviously are not allowed on most of the roads, but in order to get to a gas station or wherever they want to go, they need to drive on a public road and that is where the problem arises, you know? You can endanger the safety and security of other people and that is a state or a federal issue.
I'll definitely look into that as I get back and I can have, let's say, counsel with that. Do you have statute for me? An expert in right now, but thank you for your question.
I'd like to start a dialogue in Montpelier to give senior citizens a break on school taxes. There are many in this state, I know myself included, have never had a child in school in Vermont, paid school taxes, be 88 years old and still paying school taxes. And it seems like at some point, 85 years old or somewhere, that you could exempt us from school taxes.
I know that that has been a conversation in the past and that conversation hasn't gone very far. Vermont being very small, relies on every individual to help support their community, which includes their schools. I appreciate your comment. I don't want to give you false hope and say that that's going to have a lot of traction within the body, but thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for the time.
Article 12. So the town vote to change the fiscal year from January 1st to December 31st to a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th, effective for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, pursuant to 24 BSA 1683C. Your motion? Your motion?
I want to know.
Is there a motion?
So do.
Is there a second? We've been moved and seconded that the town vote to change the fiscal year from January 1st to December 31st to December 31st to a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th, effective for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, pursuant to 24 BSA 1683C. Discussion? Guys care to tell us why you've chosen that path?
Sure. So this is one that can get kind of wonky, but we did detail in the town report in the letter, pages 16 and 17, the rationale behind this. So one of the most obvious ones is right now we're passing a budget for FY19 and we're already two months plus into it. What this would do, it would allow us to pass a budget well in advance of actually operating under that budget. It'd give us a lot more time to prepare the budget. Right now, it's usually a scramble in the month of January to get everything together and get a budget together for town meeting. Books don't close until the 31st of December. Oftentimes, things are outstanding until the middle of January. So it really puts us into a two to three week pinch to put a budget together. This would give us a lot more time. Missable taxes would be built in the same cycle as education taxes, so it would greatly simplify the property transfer calculations. Plus of tax revenue would occur closer to the start of the fiscal year instead of at the end of the fiscal year after most of the expenses have been incurred. So it would really help our books balance better during the year. It would help future planning for contractual obligations, make that easier. Anybody on that side of the room want to pitch in?
So as far as benefits are concerned for health insurance, the select board and the employees have to be able to make a decision on the enrollment period in December. And if the discussion is not had and the budget approved until March, it really ties the select board hands, their hands in being able to determine whether or not they want to change that offering. And there are other things, but the health insurance one has always been one that is, you know, it's a big ticket item and the select board needs some flexibility with the employees in determining what's the best option for the town and the budget.
One other point is that the annual audits would get performed prior to the town report for the period being reporting. So under this, you'd have additional peace of mind having that audit at hand.
Ms. Jane?
This affects when we pay our property taxes?
So other towns have moved towards this model. I think most recently Fletcher and Fairfax have moved. And what that means, the state education tax would not change at all. They are already being billed on a fiscal year, which is why property transactions are so complicated. So it would mean that the select board would either need to budget for 18 months for the next town meeting, which would increase the 25% portion of your tax bill by 50%, convoluted math. But the smallest portion of your tax bill would double, I'm sorry, not double, would increase by 50% in order to make that an 18-month budget. The other option is the select board could have a special meeting to pass a six-month budget and possibly build those out in the February or March period next year so that it would be easier for the property owner, you know, to make those payments.
Yeah. This first year would be growing pains. But afterward, we think that setting us up for the future would make a lot more sense. Just as a point of clarification too, I think about 123 other towns in Vermont do it this way. So she mentioned a couple in our neck of the woods, but it's become a pretty common practice.
Not, I totally understand, I guess, but I guess my question is, if that is going to possibly incur people having like payments, not having plans for themselves financially for this, would there be a way to say a grace period that would not incur those interests, you know, on monies not paid on top? I'm not sure.
I think, so the question was whether or not the board might grant a grace period for late taxes after this new cycle. The concern being that if folks plan a certain way, their annual budgets, and we shift it and have taxes due earlier in this first year, it could create a hardship. I think that's something that the board would totally consider. Again, we realize that this shift would be a big lift in this first year, year and a half period. So I totally think that's something that we could consider.
Is that something you can make an amendment to this?
You can make amendment.
Can I just clarify the stats a little bit?
Yeah.
So if your income, I'm sorry, your property tax liability is $1,000 in total for education and municipal. 25% give or take stays with the town for the municipal budget. So that's $250. And if we're asking for an 18-month budget, that would be an increase of about $125 per $1,000 in tax liability to be carried over.
So I'm making an argument?
So it sounds like a very large, a large percentage when you're talking about 50% of the municipal, but when you're looking at the actual tax liability for each property, majority of that liability lies with the education tax. So only 25% of that is for the town budget itself. That's the only piece that would increase by 50% for that one period where we're trying to make that change.
For an 18-month period.
Exactly.
Yeah, the transitional period.
So we're still paying August and November?
November.
But that's not going to change. But it'll increase a bit on the municipal side just to get us through and then it's going to continue to be August and November. So we're not going to, August is going to have a big tax bill due in June, which will make my mortgage company go, eh! Because that's where it's clear for that to...
Right. So this budget, if they move to, or go forward with an 18-month budget, then that would be proposed at next town meeting. So it wouldn't be until next year's tax bill that this would take effect.
Do you require an amendment to go ahead and do an 18-month budget versus a separate special six-month budget?
Not under this because if it take effect beginning July 1st, 2020, so I think this gives us the flexibility to do it either way.
Oh, I'm hearing the hot move, but I'm saying anyways, would this change the due date of the taxes?
No.
Article 12, any other questions or comments? Where do you go?
So you'd be able to call a sick, at the end of this year, a special meeting if you want to do a six-month budget.
If we were going to do the six-month budget, you'd call a special meeting for that, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Now we can proceed to the vote. Article 12, that the town vote to change the fiscal year from January 1st to December 31st to a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th, effective for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, pursuant to 24 BSA 1683C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it and we've approved Article 12 as read. Article 13, so the town vote to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allocated to the Conservation Reserve Fund established by the voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 BSA 2804. Motion?
As written.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town vote to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allocated to the Conservation Reserve Fund established by the voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 BSA 2804. Discussion?
Can someone refresh my memory as to what we voted?
Yeah. So this was, this was an item that was passed last year. It established a fund that would be saved and used to leverage additional monies to conserve land in the public interest, intention paid to natural scenic and recreational resources for the long-term benefit of our community. There's a full guidelines policy for the fund on the website. Last year's town report had a much broader summary. When it was passed, it was passed under the provision that it would come back as an item on the warning every year so that the town could decide whether or not to do it. It wouldn't be an automatic increase, which is why it's back again this year.
600?
Yeah, it raised about 600 bucks last year. I'm sorry, 803.
That is? Discussion?
And what have they done with that money thus far?
Thus far, nothing's happened. The idea with the fund is that it would probably be grown over a certain period of time until a project came before the, before the board. And there are policies in place to process for that and how it would be administered.
Any other comments? Merle?
This would be an addition to what we've already voted on taxes.
Yeah, this would. This would be an additional half a cent increase, yeah. And the reason why we did it last year to pull it out as an item was just for that purpose. So if the voters consider it annually as that addition, yeah.
How much money would that raise?
I believe it raised up 800 and...
803 last year.
803 dollars is what it raised last year.
Any other comments? If not, we can proceed to this vote. Article 13, that the town approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund established by the voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 BSA 2804. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it and we approve Article 13 as read. Article 14, to the voters at the town of Montgomery, advise the select board to support the exploration through a feasibility study to be funded by a municipal planning grant on the development of a municipal wastewater system to include the center and/or village. Motion? Second?
Second.
Moved to second it that the voters of the Town of Montgomery advise the select board to support the exploration through a feasibility study to be funded by a municipal planning grant on the development of a municipal wastewater system to include the center and/or village. Discussion?
Wasn't this study done just a few years ago? And because we are flooding so down through here that it's going to have the removal of wastewater way up on some mountain or hill here in Montgomery Center?
I can speak to this. Casca Smith, along with Walter and Sarita Khan and Ethan Dahl. We are part of the Montgomery Thrives Wastewater Committee. Years ago, after the flood, the powers that be came to town and determined that the biggest need this town may have after the flood was municipal septic. There was a planning grant then applied for and a study was done, which we have passed along since new regenerated effort. A lot of that information is still pertinent. So we have gotten, I mean, it's not specific and can't be used exactly, but we have, I don't know, a quarter of the battle taken care of with that existing study. It's not that out of date, believe it or not. And our properties, or the land hasn't changed much. So what we're trying to do is get the ball rolling again. We did end up, as a result of that previous effort with the million-dollar grant, which we segwayed to the water situation because it was needed. That project took a lot more money and time, but it is complete and working well. But now it's time to address the obvious, you know.
I have, I can carry us forward, building off of Casca there. You know, all of you may remember the history of possible wastewater development in this town, going back a long ways to maybe something that Walter Steele wanted to do years ago. And then, of course, the study and question was just about. You know, moving forward to our future, the wastewater commission here is asking to be formally recognized because that's what we need in order to actually ask for grant money. Without being formally recognized, we have no power to even apply for anything. You know, with that formal recognition, you know, we will be able to apply for some grants, not just in the development phase right now, but there's a real key thing happening right now in the state. There is quite a bit of money available in this next year's term. And as you all know or do not know with grants, it's not constant. Every year's different. Right now, there's money. In two years, it might not be there. And so that's one of the reasons we pushed this commission together. And also you as a community, or we as a community chose to do this. One of the top three things from the Montgomery Thrive initiatives out of 25 things, or 25 topics that we all identified, this was one of the top three. And of the other, of the total of 25-plus topics that we identified as a community, almost all of them require a wastewater system to be developed or implemented. So everything that seems to matter to the community kind of hinges on figuring out how to make this work. And that's really why us moving forward, being able to get this, apply for these grants. And then you'll hear a lot more from us over the next year as a commission. And we're hoping you all support this.
Questions, Tom?
Suzanne Tyler here. So what's not working with each home having their own municipal waste? What's not working?
Yes. I can take it.
I mean, it's, well, that's...
Okay. So there are a few things going on right now. We are, there's been a higher environmental concern and recognition of our, we are the headwaters of a watershed, of a river here, proud river. And what that has done is put a larger environmental focus on pollutants going down that river. One of them being identified as the close proximity of all of the septic systems to the current headwaters. Now, are the systems still working for many of the town members around this waterway? Yes. However, as some of you over the years have found out and maybe are currently finding out, you are no longer able to have grandfather clause, meaning if you have to update or replace, you may fall under, or some of you definitely do fall under, the problem of environment, are you environmentally allowed by EPA to even have a system? If you want to put an addition on your house, if you want another bedroom, if you want to upgrade any of the properties with another, with more...
Sell your house.
Want to sell your house. You can't, you can't do it without spending more money or you may not, or you may be told to flat out, no, you can't put another bedroom on. You can't do an addition. Anyone who comes in to sell your property, or if you choose to sell a property, one of the number one questions is to please ask the realtors in town. They will, they will agree with this. The number one question is, how's the septic? Because everyone knows if it fails, you may not have room to put another one in. One of the case in points that we know in town right now, across the street, one of our businesses, Bernie's, is having trouble with their septic. They've found a solution, but it required them to buy land from a neighbor and try to make it work. How many of you have that option? Okay? This is about growth and it's about the environment. Try to enable us all as a community to have value in our properties moving forward.
I was going to add to that. Municipally, this meddling, this parking lot, the septic that exists under that parking lot, who knows what it is? So we want to pave that in doing that. Somebody's going to put a shovel in there and it's going to cause a ripple effect.
So I get houses and buildings near the trout river? So like my house, I have my own water supply. And would people be given the option to connect to a town septic or would they be forced and required, even though there's nothing wrong with their system? So how do you see it happening?
So without getting heavily into that discussion, that'll be the next phase. The part, the core of this study is, is to give us options again. Like Casca said, it was a study done quite a few years ago. Most of that's still pertinent. Due to the way government works, we need a new study done to get new feasibility options available to us. Once we have those options, this is not a vote to say whether or not we are doing a septic system for this town. This is just a feasibility study vote. Will you allow us to do, empower us as a commission to be formally recognized, to find options to then report on future time report? What we find out is just an advisory panel to you and us, the community, and to the board. We have no power to sign the dotted line and put you all in debt.
The state was just rated, and they just said the report card. We came in very low on the wastewater infrastructure scale. We got a D minus, the state of Vermont did. But we know what. So the money, so, you know, the federal people that fund this stuff, they're zero, they're like, give us, give us a project. Make money. Ready to give you some money?
One of the reasons we have so much, we're pushing on this right now. Like Casca's saying, they want to give us the money. We are one of only, if I remember from Montgomery Thrive, we're only one of only three communities within Vermont where we actually have a growing population of the age 20 to 40. This is considered a major road age. And if I quoted it correctly, I believe I did, that is one of the reasons why Montpelier has a spotlight on us and why we have, might have a chance to maybe get more money currently than in past years or few years.
What's that? Tom?
We had a feasibility study on the sewer system years ago. It's probably on file in the town office.
Yep.
Yeah, we did. We got that.
Once you see that study, I don't know how the voters will ever approve an actual water system availability. If you look at page 28 on your board, we have a debt service of $1.7 million already. I had $240,000 for this truck. We're up at $1 million debt service now. How in the world can we keep reporting this? It's just, you can't do it.
Your point's well taken. And at this point, I think that's like a step five. And these guys are at step one. I do know that one thing they are investigating is funding opportunities. I mean, they've had a number of folks up here from the Agency of Commerce, the folks that administer the Northern Borders, regional development grants. So they will be looking for money. But your point's well taken.
How much does this study cost us? I mean, you get a grant, the grant's cost money.
So, yeah. We, it's been told to us by multiple sources that the actual feasibility study is nearly, nearly 100%, if not truly totally covered.
Yeah.
That, that is, otherwise we'd be asking for appropriation to pursue this right now. We actually believe we qualify for a full grant, 100% cost covered.
Jay Walsh, you just spoke of recognition.
Correct. Now we just, I mean, you got it? Yeah.
We can't apply for anything until that happens.
We just want to be recognized so that we can get the grants.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Our river was recognized as well and seen nationally, the only one in Vermont. Should there be need for funds for any group? Feel free to go to the Well and Seana Committee. Every year, we have tens of thousands of dollars to give out in grants. Thanks, thanks to that discussion.
Any comments? Discussion? On Article 14, that the voters of the Town of Montgomery advise the select board to support the exploration through a feasibility study to be funded by a municipal planning grant on the development of a municipal wastewater system to include the center and/or village. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
No. I'm not really the only one, but...
The ayes have it. And we have, we have passed Article 14 as written. Before I get to Article 15, I just want to make a comment. And yes, the no-hitter was spoiled at the bottom of the night. And yes, this is mighty bra. So I appreciate everybody getting through this very quickly so people can get back to what they really want to do later this afternoon. Good team. To do any other business property done, that's that meeting.
All right, Mark. Mark.
I just, just want to recognize our highway department and everyone that works for the town and volunteers, especially the highway, the highway department for keeping our roads safe this winter. It's been a challenging winter with all the ice and snow and it cut the safer of us. I just want to thank everybody that volunteers and helps the town, keeps the town running.
Any other business anywhere?
So Mark, Mark took my first one. So I'll second that. The second one, I think the board wants to thank everybody here and all the taxpayers. I mean, crafting a budget, you know, I see it's a big increase. And we know and recognize that affects everybody in this room or not in this room. But if it was possible on the cover of the next report, like a mirror, we would do that. Because the town takes everybody here, everybody who pays tax, everybody who lives here. So thank you guys very much. A dozen or so towns throughout the state have a proposal to be taken up under other business concerning climate change. And that proposal that I've seen is fairly long and complicated and certainly controversial in hope of getting something passed unanimously. I thought of something that's much shorter and hopefully less controversial. Okay, move. Climate change being the greatest threat to national and state security and the point of no return being estimated at 12 years from now. Therefore, the voters of the Town of Montgomery instruct their legislators, local, state, and national, to start leading so that, so as to avoid the impending consequences.
Any questions? Let's take forward.